Good evening. I'll open this meeting of the Planning Commission on Monday, June 9, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Reynolds.
Here.
Vice.
Here.
There we are. Commissioner Coronado, Commissioner Neely, Commissioner Radulovich.
Present.
Commissioner Roethlisberger.
Here.
Commissioner Santana, Commissioner Goodman, Chair, we have quorum.
All right. Thank you. If you're able to, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing no changes to the posted agenda, the agenda is approved. We do have one set of minutes, and I'll need a motion and a second to approve the May 29, 2025 certification of the minutes.
I move to approve based on the Clerk's certification, the May 29, 2025 regular meeting, special night minutes of the Littleton Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion by Almond, second by... I'm sorry. Radulovich, sorry. I will set up the vote on the minutes.
The vote is four in favor. The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. So next up on the agenda is the public comment portion. This is for comments that are not related to items that are otherwise on the agenda this evening. It's an opportunity to express opinions, as I said, about issues not on the agenda, and we will have a separate opportunity for comment on items that are on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and we expect the discussion and testimony to be civil. And I'll note that, for the record, we, the board, or rather, the Planning Commission's not authorized under Colorado Open Meetings law to discuss, comment, or take action on any issue during the public comment that is not a part of tonight's agenda. We have one person signed up for public comment, Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I have a block and a half from here. And my request, or ask, or complaint, or whatever, tonight is that we need an integrated comprehensive plan. And you're the Planning Commission. The need for that should be coming from you. The demand of it should be coming from you. The identification for a need for it should come from you, or at least partly from you. And the reason I say this, although we have something called a comprehensive plan, it is not. It was a step toward a unified land use code, and it came from a visioning process that was inadequate, in my opinion, to say the least. We hired Ken and Keast, and they were hired partly for their community outreach, and they said they would go into the community. They would go to areas where people met naturally and collect data. And I'm going to tell you, that never happened, interestingly enough. When Ken and Keast came to report results, it wasn't based on, well, we went to these 20 different community-type meetings, and here are the results. I don't think that's in the record, because I don't think it happened. Something after they were contracted changed. And so what we got was a, and also the future land use map morphed during that period. So I don't think we got a comprehensive, integrated, functionally-integrated plan. Also, they could model from the land use map. They could model revenue and expenditure, which, you know, any planning firm professional should be able to do. And that was never done. That wasn't a part of the approval process. You can model traffic and other things from land use changes, and that wasn't done either. It's not in the record. Well, that's what we need. And the other thing, point I want to make is Littleton has a definable feel. Many people have testified here why they came to Littleton was partly because when they got here, they said, wow, this is a neat place to live. They could feel a distinctive sense of place that was different from others, and it had a character. We should have attempts to preserve that. The character was accomplished through our previous zoning with an intentional balance of uses, Norgrin gates, rubber, Pentax, medical uses, and residential and institutional to buffer the residential of varying sizes, around 10 or 13 walkable areas. There'd be a commercial area on a corner, and then small-scale multifamily, and then small-scale single, and then schools were a portion there, and churches and other uses that created this feel that is great. We also have the mid-century modern on Littleton Boulevard, which we're about to lose because we have failed to produce our historic preservation plan, which we were promised within a year of the passage of the ULUC. It wasn't put in the ULUC. The ULUC is in no way unified. So I could go on, but Planning Commission, we need a plan. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Planning Commission for public comment? Seeing no one else in the room, we'll move to general business, of which we have none, but we do have one public hearing item. PC Resolution 04-2025 recommending approval to City Council of a Code text amendment to Title 10 of the Unified Land Use Code related to master sign plans. We'll hear from staff as the applicant, and then we'll move on to the public comment portion.
Thank you very much. Before you this evening is a discussion about the proposed master sign plan, ULUC code amendment. On the agenda this evening is the code amendment's intent and purpose, the applicability, the attached signs, freestanding signs, and then exempt signage. In the master sign plan intent and purpose, the purpose is to discuss changes made to the previously brought-up master sign plan item. So for instance, Planning Commission discussed this in concept on February 24. We brought it back very briefly, though, with City Council at the Joint State Council and Planning Commission meeting on March 11, more recently. And it was at that City Council meeting where we heard that the term master sign plan may not be exceedingly palatable. So at the last Planning Commission meeting on April 28, talked about changing it to shopping center and campus signage plan. Felt that that was a little cumbersome and unwieldy, and master sign plan is kind of an industry standard. There's a lot of communities that call it that same item. So we felt that instead of changing the name, we would provide more education and talk about what a true master sign plan was. I think at the joint PC and City Council meeting, there was a little ambiguity there that we just needed to correct. So we have gone back to master sign plan. I wanted to make sure that was clarified in this presentation. But we did talk about a lot more specifics in April 28. So we've taken those specifics, made a few modifications, added some, you know, text language about administration, et cetera, and brought it back to you here this evening. So I'm happy to go over, you know, any of these sections in detail. Continuation of purpose and intent. ULUC is currently referenced in the master sign, as master sign plan in the ULUC in two locations. One is in the CMU sign standards, and then one is in the Business Industrial District sign standards as well. Those two locations indicate master sign plan as reserved. We are attempting to, to provide, you know, that text rather than have reserved sections. The way that we're doing, or that we're proposing to do that is by creating a new section in Chapter 10.1, and then having these two sections reference that code section with the standards in it. We are also proposing a new section in Chapter 10.9, which is the administrative section. That administrative section would discuss exactly the process of how you would apply for master sign plan process. We are proposing that to be an administratively-approved process with maximum signage parameters. Purpose, I've gone kind of over these basic items in the last couple, but I'll read through them quickly again because they have not changed. Consistent with the sign, or excuse me, the city's design standards, adhere to developments' design guidelines if applicable, promote economic development, contribute positively to the built environment, align with zoning and land use regulations, balance aesthetic consistency, and ensure regulatory compliance and functionality as the purpose of this ordinance section. Applicability, this is also not changed. We did have a different size parameter initially for conversation, but it seemed like Planning Commission was fairly amenable to the change of a minimum of 10 acres, and then the locations of corridor mix, business center, and industrial park for the zone districts that would be allowed. Attached signs, so come up with a concept of tying certain sign allowances through the code to the roadways listed here. As I mentioned in the last meeting, they are currently located in the transportation master plan as commercial corridor or suburban connector. Now, we understand that that may change, but that's why we're listing the streets, or proposing to list the streets. So proposing altering the maximum square footage allowed on small sites from 32 square feet to 40 square feet when fronting one of those commercial corridors or suburban connectors. I'll kind of show you here in future slides, the, what that location looks like, what those locations look like. So this is just trying to be a somewhat representative example of the difference in size and signage, and then calling out the part of the code where it indicates maximum sign square footage, 32 square feet or, so this is why I say for, for buildings that are fairly narrow, or tenant spaces that are fairly narrow, because if you have a much wider building, you, you do have a bigger allowance, because it becomes a formula then. This is just that, that maximum for the small sites. But 32 square feet or 1 square feet of sign area for each 1.5 linear feet of facade width occupied by an individual business, whichever is greater. Excuse me. Greater, and then we're also proposing a section that would discuss greater maximum wall signage for larger buildings setback from a corridor or connector. So what I, I took this image from kind of a neighboring unincorporated area because I wanted a neutral image to, to start to measure out and to give an example of. So for instance, the, the buildings that are to the left, so just fronting that corridor or connector, those would be the, the buildings that would be eligible for the change from 32 to 40 square feet of fronted, or of sign, of wall signage, because they front onto a highway. The rationale is they front onto a highway, a little bit higher speed, therefore, a little better able to see that signage. And then we're proposing larger wall signage from a maximum of 200 square feet to 300 square feet for buildings that are setback 200 feet from the commercial corridor, and that are over 100,000 square feet. So for instance, I've drawn that horizontal line that says 590 linear feet. So that is substantially farther back from the highway than even this would require them to be. But it's also to illustrate that this provision is not meant for locations that front onto that main street. It is for buildings that are setback, typically larger in nature. And then the proposal is for, you know, that larger sign allowance. Freestanding signs. Freestanding multi-parcel shopping center and campus signs, the location directly adjacent to the entrance into the subdivision or campus environment, intersection of two streets with classifications of commercial corridor or suburban connector. So once again, that list that I discussed earlier. And then no two freestanding multi-parcel shopping center or campus signs shall be located within 600 feet of each other or measured along, excuse me, 600 feet of each other, measured along the property lines that adjoin those corridors, or separated by a public rideaway. So this is a change from what we discussed last meeting. We talked about a linear difference of 800 feet rather than 600 feet. So I want to be fully transparent about that, and I'm happy to have a discussion about this. I did also on this diagram, what I attempted to do is call out in those, those pins, you know, the locations that in this scenario, a sign would be allowed to be located. So the, and you could kind of see where about that 500 to 700 feet, et cetera, would, would be, right? So, you know, some of those are pretty close to the 5, to the 600 mark, a little less until you round the corner. So we do think that 600 is a fairly appropriate standard based on, you know, on this example. The only difference there is the interior drives pointed into the site, those would be private. That is not always the case. Sometimes they are public, if they're a little larger street. So under this, they'd be allowed to have a sign on either side of a public street, as, as is proposed. Happy to have a conversation about that as well, but I wanted to call out that in this scenario. Both the wall sign and the freestanding signs, if you were to apply for a master sign plan, have the intent to be tied to the CM standards, because the CM standards are more robust, and they actually cover more signs than the IP standards. So we felt, or we are proposing and felt that the CM standards were more applicable for signage in something that is meant to be more conducive and aesthetically similar. So I wanted to make sure that, that everyone was aware of that proposed provision. I do have the shopping center and campus signs on that slide yet. Just pardon me. Maximum size allowed for monument or pole or pylon size. So one of the things is, that is being proposed, is that if you apply for the master sign plan, and you want to have these multi-parcel or campus environment type signs, the larger pole, pylon or monument, you would not be allowed to have a pole sign. The proposal is just for monument or pylon. And that proposal also would be to comply with the CM standards, however, with two different provisions. One would be, is proposed that the size, the height of the sign would not be tied to the neighboring building, as is the case in the pylon signage. It says lesser of the highest point of the building or 25 feet. We're proposing to just have it be 25 feet, still tied to the code, just not tied to the neighboring building, because we're talking about the shopping center as a whole, is the, is the rationale there. And then also tying it to the maximum total sign area in Table Note 2. So once again, the maximum area is a calculation. However, because this is meant to be a shopping center sign, we'd rather not tie it to potentially one of the smaller parcels adjacent to it. However, rather just have an overall maximum size, which was already existing, found in Table Note 2. And then is proposed yet to prohibit electronic messenger signs, with the exception of four numeric-digit digital displays. Now, that being said, we had the conversation about, last time, about Reed versus Gilberts and the content neutrality of our code. And so having some fun with some code language there, but largely that is to, to get that allowance for the potential for numeric gas prices without explicitly stating it, right? So that's, that's the intent there. Similar, yeah, kind of example here. And then, once you have decided as an applicant that you wanted to put in multi-parcel signage, you know, that subdivision signage, that campus signage, well, subdivision signage is actually the best example here. If your individual tenant parcels, your outlots, et cetera, wanted to have their own freestanding signage, the proposal is that they would be restricted to just monument signage. They would not be allowed pylon or, or pole, and that is to keep things at a little shorter height, because you have the taller subdivision signs, and for uniformity purposes. The, the other item, you know, we kept the electronic messenger sign prohibition with that one exception of four digits. And then the other item that I just wanted to call to your attention is, in the CM standards, we actually have four freestanding signage types. It's pole, pylon, monument, and post. So I did want to indicate that post would still be an allowed signage type under this current code proposal. Then, you know, we kind of talked a little bit about where the best location for, you know, some of these other provisions were. Came to the conclusion that rather than having these two items, the building way finds, finding signage, or the drive-through signage in the master sign plan, that we'd prefer to have them in the exempt signage as a, as a whole, right? So entrance signs, but only up to, I believe it was 10 square feet. So, you know, you're walking into the store, and it says entrance and exit. Well, currently, we don't really have a provision for that. So this is trying to rectify that scenario. And then secondly, the service entrance signs, buildings over, it was 100,000 square feet. However, the last time we spoke about it here at the Planning Commission, we did receive the feedback that, hey, a grocery store might like this. They're probably not 100,000 square feet. What, what do you think is a reasonable provision there? So we did some surveying of grocery store sizes, et cetera. Came to the conclusion that 60,000 is probably a good number there. And then a maximum of 32 square feet. The photo is still a little egregious in size, so they would not be that large. Drive-through signage, this one we struggled with a little bit, because I've worked with some other codes that have had much stricter standards when it came to size, et cetera. We kind of came to the conclusion that maybe less was more there, and that businesses would typically have proprietary signage when it comes to their drive-throughs, pre-standardized signage. So what we are proposing to limit, though, is the overall number, one primary, one secondary drive-through sign per drive-through lane. And then a lot of them are going electronic now, so with an allowance that they would be able to have an electronic display on that sign. We did not really go into percentage amount of electronic for the sign, et cetera, because once again, there's so many ranges and differences, you know, franchise to franchise, restaurant to restaurant. But, you know, we can have those, those discussions as well. And with that, that is, you can have a brief overview of the proposed sign language changes. I am happy to answer any questions.
Are there any initial questions for staff? Not seeing any initial questions. We'll therefore open the public comment portion of this public hearing at 6:55 PM. Ask if Mrs. Chadbourne would like to speak, and in fact, has signed up.
Thanks. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I have a block and a half from here. So I'm extremely disappointed in this. I think that this affects the community and the way it looks. I think it affects people who live across the street from a lot of places, and they don't know that this is happening. And you know, another thing they can't see is a picture. I think that poles, pylons, and monuments don't mean anything to most of us. Doesn't mean anything to me. And hearing somebody talk about it is not enough. I need a picture, and I want to see it on Littleton Boulevard. I want to see it on Main Street or Alamo, or one of the entry. I want to see it on Main Street or Alamo or one of the entry gateways to downtown. And I want to see it, let's say up on Lowell, a corridor. And I want to see how that affects the people living across the street from the small commercial that we have on that street. I want to see how it affects the historic districts. So, you know, the claim that, just to say, lots of signs, let's see, I don't think this contributes positively to the built environment. Again, show me that it's compatible with historic areas. I don't see it. Balancing the aesthetic consistency, one of the statements was, we thought because it's meant to be shopping center sign, we wouldn't tie it to the smaller parcels adjacent. I mean, does that directly contradict aesthetic consistency or contributing positively to the existing built environment? Yes, it contradicts it fundamentally. We don't even have historic design standards for Littleton Boulevard. So this could really, and, and those would be great. If we could do that mid-century modern design aesthetic with signs and Historic Preservation Board has talked about this for years. The possibilities are great. But this, I don't see how this would enhance the character and I think it would continue to degrade it. I mean, it would be anti-aesthetic. So there should have been illustrations from the beginning for you and for the public of different concepts of what these signs look like. I mean, I'm sorry, but they must exist somewhere. They exist a lot of places. And then how would they look in our built environment? That would show that these requirements are met. I don't see that these requirements are met at all. Some of them I've mentioned explicitly. So I think this should be not a recommendation for approval. I mean, the data simply isn't here. So very frustrating. And, and Commissioner Newley actually asked for the illustrations earlier and the comment was something like, well, I'm not good at the drawings, so I'll wait till the presentation at council. No, no, planning commission. To make the decision, we need to see the examples in place to prove that it meets these criteria. This fails. Please disapprove it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding this item? Seeing no other people present in the room, close the public comment portion of the public hearing at six fifty-eight PM. Any questions for staff?
I suppose first off, how would this apply in a historically designated area? Is it the same, is it the same, just whatever's in our code is going to apply to that? Is it going to have to have any sort of special rules with it? Is there any, is there any continued, I suppose, anything added to it just because it's in, say, like our historic Main Street area, if that were to happen? Although I don't know if it would necessarily. I just, in a historically designated area, are there additional hurdles for this?
Absolutely. Under the current proposal, it would not be allowed in a historic area. The current proposal is only ten acres or larger in CM, BC or IP. So that knocks out all of Littleton Boulevard. There are no parcels currently there. There'd be, have to be quite a bit of consolidation of a lot to make it ten acres. Downtown would be the same. The only parcel that really would be affected downtown or could apply for this, I believe, would be AAC because of their CM designation. So the Community College and that would be over ten acres.
Okay. Roughly how large is Woodlawn? I'm not totally sure how, and how many acres that would be.
I can find that out.
Okay, just by, at some point. When you're looking through the list of streets that are listed on this, it seems that one is, one of these things is not like the other with Lincoln Street. I understand where it's at. I'm just curious is to, is there any other chunks of Lincoln Street that would be in our jurisdiction that would be just sort of unintended, unintended consequences with this one? Because I, I don't, we're mainly on the west side. It's just that one strip between Mineral and, and County Line, basically. It's almost like a frontage road to Broadway with a bunch of businesses behind it. Is there any other part of Lincoln Street that would adversely be affected with this? That you can think of?
I cannot think of other locations that front Lincoln Street that, because the, the transportation mobility or the master plan calls out that section in particular. I do agree with you that that is kind of the outlier. The recommendation could be to build in an exception that would remove Lincoln Street if you so chose. It gets a little messy that way, but, but that would be an option.
I'm not sure if it needs to be excluded or specifically called out as to which section of Lincoln Street we're talking about. But I, I think it's sort of taken care of with which zoning districts this is allowed in because just in case you have a little bit of Lincoln that's in a residential area, you obviously can't do this unless it were to be rezoned.
If I'm, if I may, Commissioner, Woodlawn is eight point five four ish acres, eight and a half acres.
Okay, so if they decided, decided to undergo a major remodeling, they would not be, they would not be allowed to do this?
Under the current provisions, they would not be allowed.
Okay. It seems to me that would be a place that may want to do it is the, is the conundrum there. Are electronic signs prohibited basically throughout the rest of the code? Or just in this particular instance?
There are certain locations where changeable copy signs are allowed. So, you know, whether that's you go out there with your stick and, and put up, you know, the, the classic is like the Burger King or something of that nature. There are some provisions. We had heard from planning commission early on in the process that, that there was not a lot of support for large electronic signs.
No, that's fair. The illumination standards on these signs is going to be the same as what's in the current code, correct?
That's what's proposed, yes.
Okay, just looking through it, it mentions types of lighting, but it never really goes into like other things we have discussed in the past about like certain number of lumens and, and the like that contribute to things like glare and, and, you know, what your neighbor sees, what oncoming traffic sees, things of that nature. I don't know if that is a thing that is planned to be talked about at a later date or if that is just something that's on the back burner right now.
I wanted to double check because I believe I looked into this and there was a sign, there was a section on illumination, sign illumination standards. I believe that was in the outdoor illumination section. So we felt that it was covered.
It was covered in that section?
Yeah, outdoor sign, oh, that's in the South Platte environs. Looked into that after the meeting. I'll see if I can find that section here for us.
Okay, yeah, if you could email that. I mean, I, I know I've got, I've been looking at some pictures of like street lights and the like. Yeah, if you can hunt that down and, and find it, I, there might be a retroactive, hey, maybe we should look into this. The, you mentioned that pole signs would be allowed. Would they, would they be under the same things as basically the CM, which would be the, I think, what was it, twelve feet high or so? Twelve feet high, thirty-two square feet of maximum area, one per street with a maximum of two? Or a post sign, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, post, yes, okay. Thank you for the clarification there. Yeah, not proposing to change the CM allowance for post sign in, in this update. So as an individual parcel, you would be allowed the monument sign and then post signs per code.
Okay, but would this allow for post signs as well? I thought, I thought you said that it would.
So initially, the, the last conversation we had just flat out omitted post signs and I wanted to make sure that was addressed here. So the current sign code language, I believe, allow, is, it's proposed to allow for those, for those post signs.
Yes, from, from what I remember, granted, I, I missed the last one, but I was at the one before that. I don't think any of us were huge fans of the post sign particularly. And I, I know there was, a part that was taken out was basically, hey, you can eliminate some signs to make something bigger, which is probably a wise decision, at least in my opinion. But our, so post signs would be permitted under this, under this particular amendment?
As written, however, as indicated, that is something that would, you know, be easily added and amended, meant to the recommendation.
And could we, I'm, I'm assuming we could amend it to maybe just along particular streets like Santa Fe if needed, where you have some certain recessed areas, like a Breckenridge Brewery or the like, but possibly not along other streets like Broadway or Littleton Boulevard, correct?
Yeah, so a post sign, one per street frontage, six square feet, maximum height above grade, five feet, minimum front property line setback, five feet. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on table ten, one, three, ten F, as in Frank. But we're, we're working with the CM.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Ten, three, five.
It's, it's the one per street frontage, thirty-two square feet and twelve foot height? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm seeing? Because we're not working with the acreage or that type. Those, I guess these are the temporary signs, they're not the permanent ones.
Oh, okay.
I think I'm looking, I might be looking at the wrong.
Okay, yeah, I think we're on a separate, separate table.
What's the other table you were looking at?
Yeah, ten, three, five, one, two. Because we have a lot of numbers.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no. That's the code.
What were the, I'm gonna go ahead and just take your word for it. Were they on that for the post signs?
I, I put it in the presentation, so I can get it back up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Here we go. Yeah, so it's the third black line, there's post. So what we're, what the proposal is, you know, is if you utilize the, the larger, you know, pylon signs or monument signs for the shopping center or the subdivision, the big ones, then as individual parcels, you would be foregoing pylon signs and pole signs. I had realized that I had left out a sign category and wanted to make sure I addressed it in this provision. And so that's why I tackle, I proposed monument sign, but then also those posts. And, you know, I'm more than willing to go kind of either way on the post sign. I own, I have a, a strong recommendation either way. I just want to make sure that we covered it so it wasn't in a spot of ambiguity in the code.
Yeah, this, this might be just my, in my mind, pole and post are like the same thing. So I might be just using them interchangeably. The pole sign, I think, is the one that was, was the pointer, the point of contention. So is, is that allowed on these?
The pole sign would not be allowed.
Okay, but the post sign would, which is the smaller version, to a certain degree of it, right?
Precisely.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I know, the, the terminology is pretty tight.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to interrupt briefly on the post pole sign question, there is an image of a post sign in the definitions chapter.
Okay, yeah, there's, there were quite a few images that I ran across while I was looking through this at least. But again, it's, it's just my, post and pole are the same dang thing to me sometimes. Granted, in this definition, they're not clearly.
Yeah, interesting.
I think that's, that's all I have for right now.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, a couple, I'm trying to find it here. I thought there was something that said something about at the entrance to a neighborhood or entrance to a subdivision, subdivision entrance. I'm trying to find out where that went.
Yeah, I think in the, in the code oftentimes we refer to that as subject area or subject property, excuse me, subject property, which is the area being applied for, to be within one master sign plan.
Yeah, it was just if we were talking about quarter mixed business center, industrial park, the language about, where did that go? The language about subdivision entrance was, I don't know, I just wanted to make sure that that was still something that was, where that made sense or if there was a different use we were talking about, sorry?
There is, I think, was it in the proposed code that you were looking for that language? I believe that I found what you're looking for.
Did you? Okay, I was like, I know I saw it.
So Jared, it would be in ten, one, three point ten G, the new section, under freestanding signage is where I found it. The quantity and location, I'm just gonna read the proposed code. Allowed at entrances into an MSP eligible site directly adjacent to an entrance into the subdivision or campus or at the intersection of two streets. Was that the language that you were?
Yeah, I think so. That sounds right. So does that, I mean, does that cause any issues here for talking about commercial CM, BI and, sorry, CM, BC and IP areas?
I don't think it, it causes any conflict because what the freestanding or what the quantity and locations really talking about is entrances into the site that is defined by, you know, an application would come in with kind of like a map that would say, this is the area, right? So that's our subject property or in this case eligible site. I thought I'd changed all those. And so entrances into that, but not only just any entrance, the entrances that are along those certain corridors, right? So it's really trying to focus down on, I can bring up that map. It's really trying to be very specific when it comes to the location because it's part of the rationale, here's the, the map I've been referring to in the transportation master plan. So the red lines and the blue lines are the only ones that are proposed to basically be, have that allowance that you could front onto those corridors and connectors. And then it's entrances off of those larger roads. So trying to coordinate where the location of the sign is on larger highways.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just, I'm, I want to make sure we're not blurring the lines here, I guess, between what we're talking about from, you know, the, the master sign plan and then the districts it applies to with the language of subdivision inputs rather than, or subdivision entrances rather than more like you say, subject property entrances. So probably not, not a huge deal, I don't think. But one of the other questions, so when we talk about maximum area, one square foot of sign for each one and a half linear feet of building frontage width, right? So we are talking about the physical building front, not, not, not the property, not necessarily just the straight property line. So like for Costco, they can't say our property, you know, spans from whatever Windermere to, you know, South Park and we're gonna count all of that as one and a half linear feet of building frontage to maximize the sign.
So there are still overall maximums for signage. So even if you have a very large building, you still have a maximum size of sign. You're, you are correct that there's a, there's a calculation there. Because otherwise, so, so the code i- in its current form really talks about thirty-two square feet, you know, is, is your minimum. so the code i- in its current form really talks about thirty-two square feet, you know, is, is your minimum, right? Is that's, everybody's allowed that. And then as your building gets larger, um, you know, because that's for a pretty skinny building, you still are allowed, instead of having like a really tiny sign based off the calculation.
Right.
You're allowed the thirty-two. So your building gets larger, um, your sign can get larger, but only up to a point. It can't go in, i- into infinity, right? Just, uh, so there is a maximum.
Where are my, where, where are the maximums?
Yeah, they're actually, they're in the table notes. I know, they're not the, it's not quite the most intuitive, so, um.
Oh, yep, okay, so it's. Do we, so that applies to, okay, so what, okay, sorry, so let me just, when I look at this table, I'm squinting here, um, I see, oh, there's the maximum area. Okay, so the maximum area is, I see that assigned to the pylon.
Um, the, the wall sign would be in the table above. Um, it's actually in the attached sign table, uh, ten, three, five, one, two, rather than the freestanding table.
Okay, that's the maximum, so I see that maximum area, maximum area. Okay, so we've got a, well, we don't have marquee's part of this, but I guess there's a maximum area that's to be defined for marquee signs. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that. I see that. I'm just trying to make sure that it applies to all of the, um,
So.
To all of these, because there's a, there's a maximum, let's see here, maximum area for the pole sign does not appear to have an upper limit.
Um, the pole sign, I wanna be sure I'm accurate on this.
I mean, I don't know that anybody's gonna put up a pole sign that would be, uh, that would, I, I don't know, I guess that's the question is, cause if you could construct a pole sign based on that one and a half linear feet, like that doesn't get limited to that eighty square feet.
That's.
Or that doesn't, that doesn't show a maximum, an upper limit.
I agree. It discusses that, um, for, let's see.
It discusses it for monument signs, it just, there's a maximum area, just full stop limit for post signs. There's the maximum area defined for pylon signs, but I don't see that as a, as a max, I don't see an upper limit, um, for the pole signs.
That might be a subsequent, uh, update to some of the rest of the sign standards. Under the master sign plan, it's proposed to not allow pole signs, whether that be the subdivision or the individual site. So, um, there's no proposal for a change to the pole sign regulations, actually a prohibition to that sign type in these locations.
Could you clarify that, please?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying it, it's not changing any pole sign standards, but, well, can you just tell us what you said and what does that mean?
So, so if you applied for this, because it is meant for large sites that are multi-parcels or, you know, kind of like the hospital or the college campus. So if you, as an entity, applied for this master sign plan, you would, um, submit your application for a subject area, but one of, some of the stipulations are, are that, are being proposed are that your large subdivision wide sign, your, your big tall, like, welcome to the subdivision, here's a whole bunch of different users in the subdivision, um, that no pole signs would be allowed to, for that purpose. It would only be monument or pylon. And then the same would be true of each individual spot. Right now, um, an individual user would have the option to do, you know, any or maybe all pole, pylon and monument. And so this would actually restrict them down to different signage types. It would take away some of the, some of the other signage types.
No, no, that, I was, I was gonna probably ask the same thing, um, but based on, based on table, uh, ten, three, five, one, one, we do have pole signs that are allowed as far as that commercial mixed, or it says that is permitted, so.
Yes, we're not proposing to change that table, but in the new code section where it talks about applying for master signage plans, it talks about the allowances and prohibitions to that table.
Okay, yeah, I see that. I guess, I guess the question, why, why do we still have that in the table then? Why do we still have it as permitted in the table?
Yeah, um, so if you're not in a master sign plan, you would, as it is proposed currently, you would be allowed to do any of the items on this, uh, chart. So if I am on, um, Broadway, and I'm a smaller parcel, I don't, I can't, um, apply for the master sign plan, but I could have, you know, any of the options available to me, which would be pole, pylon and, and monument, and technically post as well. Um, so there's still flexibility there, um, for the smaller sites.
I gotta get back to the other table, sorry, give me a second.
Yeah.
Where did you go? Okay, so, if I'm a smaller lot, being redeveloped again, ten, less than ten acres or whatever, I can put, I guess in that case you're talking about, I'm still limited, I'm, I'd be more limited by the linear feet of the building frontage. Is that the check then, that we're looking for, to just?
That's correct.
Keep these from getting super bloated? Okay. Um, the, uh, the height of the pylon as being twenty-five feet, um, in the table, is that still the ca, is that gonna be the case for anybody doing a master sign plan, we're going up to twenty-five feet?
That's the proposed language. Um, the proposed language, or the, the current language is twenty-five feet or tied to the building height.
Okay.
Um, you know, in, in our estimation and, and our proposal, uh, we came to the conclusion that if you're working on a subdivision, um, your neighboring building may not be that tall. Uh, other buildings in the subdivision may be, so, uh, we weren't sure that, we wanted to tie it to the neighboring building, but rather just the overall allowance that's already in the code. But that's the proposed language.
Okay, so that height, these heights aren't changing, this is what's just allowed, it's just not, it's just defining it for the master sign, okay. It just, yeah, it seems a little out of, well, I guess there's some other signs where we've got that same height, but most of our other signs I'm looking at, obviously, they're talking about lesser height of a building or fifteen feet as a maximum. Um, and then that one jumps up, not insignificantly, but, uh, I don't know that it's, it doesn't sound like that's a change we're discussing here, because that table isn't being changed.
No, however, if you feel that is too tall for a master sign plan area, you are certainly able to, um, put something in that section G, that newly proposed section, that would cap the height.
Okay.
For, just for those master sign plan areas, not for the, you know.
For not for the general code, okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, those are my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I think most of my questions have been asked and answered, so thank you.
All right, thanks, I, I, thanks for those questions, uh, helped answer some of mine, so. If I were to boil this down to what someone would get out of this optional, uh, master sign plan, it would be an allowance for larger wall signs, uh, up to forty square feet is the base, uh, area, and then, uh, if you have a large building or you're very far back, you know, up to three hundred square feet. Uh, so you get a bigger, bigger wall sign and then the option potentially for larger pylon signs at major entrances. And in exchange for that, you're, you know, losing out within that master sign plan, the, uh, option of having pole signs.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Um, one question that came up is, I was reviewing the tables, as I noticed that, uh, CM is referred to as commercial mixed, and I've seen it elsewhere in the code as corridor mixed. I'm assuming that's, uh, a typo that was present in the code, but it'd be great if we could be consistent in the code in calling it corridor mixed, specifically looking at, uh, I think it's page five, table ten, three, five, one, one, it says commercial mixed, as does one, two.
Yeah, all the tables say that.
Yes, except the ones that just have the abbreviation, and I will say, I, I actually appreciate having the parenthetical, even if it is, uh, different than the name of the zone district, so. Don't think we need to make that as part of a motion, but it looked like that might be present in the code today and.
I, Chair, what I can say is if you did want to tackle that item, we are touching ten, three, five, one, you can make that into the recommendation.
Okay, all right.
So, good catch.
Okay, no, and I, and it's not a criticism of the code. I've worked with many codes and keeping things consistent across hundreds of pages and sections and amendments that occur over years and decades is certainly a challenge, and I appreciate that. Yeah, the one other question is just generally in the sign code, uh, limits on numbers of signs, so I, you know, the exhibit you showed was sort of a large shopping center with large anchor tenants, uh, the Lowe's on Wadsworth hypothetically, um, north, north of Crestline. Um, and the, there's a lot of pad sites closer to the road, and under this, they'd be permitted, potentially, they could have a monument sign and a post sign or multiple monument signs, depending on their frontage, if they were within a master sign plan. Just trying to understand how the code works in terms of limiting the number of monument signs an individual pad site might be able to take advantage of.
Uh, that is correct. So the current code, which is what this would be, you know, pointing to, uh, is one per hundred and fifty, uh, feet of street frontage. So through the master sign plan, there would be the opportunity also to cap it at one per street frontage per outlaw, or per parcel. Um, you could, you could make a, a amendment there, or you could leave it as the one per hundred and fifty feet. And then, um, the post, uh, is one per street frontage as well. So there's not even a linear delineation, it's just one per street frontage. So yeah, theoretically, you know, you had a, a wide enough parcel, which a hundred and fifty feet on an outlot isn't, isn't all that wide. I mean, there's, there'll be outlots that would be over a hundred and fifty feet wide. Um, so theoretically, you could have two on a frontage, uh, in certain timeframes, yeah, or in certain locations.
All right, any additional questions for staff before we move on to a motion?
Just for example, Columbine Square. There would be none of this allowed on Irving Street, correct? So, because they would, but, but Bellevue and Federal are called out in this particular plan here, but none of these sort of monument signs, like, you might have some entrance signs, I'm guessing, some smaller maybe post entrance signs or something like that, but none of the monument signs, none of, like, this really is not geared toward putting signs on that particular street. It's more for the, the big streets that we're naming, correct?
Yeah, um, I think you bring up a good point. Um, I think that was, um, that's envisioned for the large pylon and monument signs that are part of the, the master area. If, if Columbine Square is, um, cut up into smaller parcels, and some of them fronted Irving, then those smaller parcels would be allowed, the monument sign per the code yet.
But if they weren't, if, if they were not in the master development plan, right, if they weren't in.
No, e- even if they were, because your, your large, uh, multi-parcels sign would not be allowed on Irving, right? Because it's not, because you're correct, it's not on one of those corridors. But if it was, if they had parceled off a, a, a piece, and so you, and they would fall under that master sign umbrella, so they would be able to have a, um, you know, they're advertising on one of the big subdivision signs on Bellevue or Federal, but for their site in particular, they would only be allowed the monument or the post, per, per code.
That's if they were in a mi, that, that's if they were in the MDP, if, or in, or the master sign plan. If they were not, they'd be afforded all of the options that are, that are in our code, up to and including a post sign, then.
Yes, yes.
Or pole sign, excuse me.
Opt out, because they are largely one parcel, so they may opt out of this, um, and just do the normal sign code, in which case, um, you know, they would be allowed any of the list of options here.
Okay, um, that's an interesting conundrum, I think, cause I don't think I want a pole sign on Irving. That's not the intent of that street. Um.
Would agree.
A- another question is, there's, there's a table note at the bottom on, uh, what is that, page seven, I guess? It's the te, it's ten, three, five, one, three, and it has the maximum total area per sign allowed is eighty square square feet per display face and a hundred and sixty square feet. Does that cover the entirety of that table? So that would apply to the post sign? That would be the maximum size of a post sign possibly?
No.
Or is that just for the pylon?
So it's, it's for, um, the pylon references, um, table note two, as does, uh, I think the monument does as well. But what, what the master sign plan indicates is that, um, because the pylon maximum area was tied to a building frontage, and if you are a subdivision wide sign, which building do you pick? Is it the most, is it the one that's adjacent, et cetera? We didn't want that limitation, we just wanted a maximum size. The code actually provided us with a maximum size in a table note, so we referenced that table note.
Yeah.
That was the, the proposal.
All right, thank you.
All right, see, no further questions?
Chair, if I may, um, I, I did have one item that I wanted to, I guess, present to commissioners, uh, for their consideration. So I think what Commissioner Roethlisberger had mentioned earlier was the use of the term subdivision and how that might be confusing. Um, it wasn't our intent to keep that in there. Actually, it was an error that we just, we've been, uh, using the term subject property. So if that is an amendment that the commissioners, um, would like to add, where any instance of subdivision within the master sign plan is replaced with subject property, and we would greatly appreciate it, cause that was not our original intent. It was just a, we just overlooked, overlooked that revision.
Yeah, I've just been using subdivision as shorthand, instead of, because I think everybody's a little more relatable to that image, but in legal terms, it would be preferable.
Do you have a recommendation as to how that, um, amendment might be written?
I think that there was only one instance of subdivision, but I don't want to make that statement right now without looking line for line. I think the amendment can simply just be as broad as within the revised provisions of the master. of the master sign plan as proposed, to replace the term or any phrases related to subdivision to subject property.
We'd need a motion to do everything first, before we start proposing amendments, though, correct?
Well, or it could be incorporated as a part of the main motion.
All right, I move to approve PC Resolution 04-2025, recommending city council approve a code text amendment to Title 10, the Unified Land Use Code, regarding master sign plans with the amendment that all instances of subdivision are replaced with subject property.
And I'll offer up a second, if you're willing to accept a friendly amendment as part of the motion to revise the tables to reference the zone district corridor mixed. Chair. I believe we got an assent on that, and if that language is adequate, I will second Commissioner Rudulovich's motion, which includes two changes. One, to strike the word subdivision and replace it with subject property within the proposed amendments and revised tables, so that they reference the correct zone district name of corridor mixed. So, motion by Rudulovich, second by Reynolds. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, I'll just offer a quick statement addressing some of the concerns we heard tonight. This is a sign code amendment, it does provide some additional signage, some additional sign areas in certain limited circumstances, which are in the slideshow, and only apply to some corridors, and as staff mentioned, explicitly do not apply in the downtown area, the historic district area, or Littleton Boulevard, for example, which will be the subject of a corridor study in the coming months. So I appreciate the work that staff has put into this, and discussing with both Planning Commission and City Council, and I think this is a good way to offer some flexibility to certain of the limited commercial corridors in the city. Any other? With that, I'll hit the ready to vote button, then.
The vote is four in favor, the motion carries.
Any reports from community development?
Just a couple small items. Boards and commissions there is coming up here in the near future, so hopefully I'll see some of you at that event. And, yeah, that's a great event to thank everyone for, for their service to, you know, the community, as saying on boards and commissions. Another item is that with the Littleton Boulevard plan, subarea plan was referenced. It is, staff is currently working on bringing that item to city council over the summer, and hoping to finalize contract over the summer as well, for final procurement there. I'm probably going to steal Wendy's thunder, but just in case, since we didn't coordinate, there will not be a meeting next, in late June here. Yeah, oh, I did, ah, I have to do my job of coordinating with Wendy. So those are my updates, thank you.
All right, city attorney, city clerk?
None, no report.
Any from commission members? And?
Just a real quick comment, and I'm wondering, I've probably brought it up before, but I don't know if I was part of the Littleton Boulevard subarea plan. It's coming, but if it's not, I think it should be broader as well. I'd like to ask staff to look at a citywide comprehensive parking management plan. I feel like everything that comes up here again and again, the big objection is, what about parking? Or you're so much criticism in terms of what about parking, what about parking? That, that I think if we, if we look proactively to kind of try to address, how would we, how will we address these concerns? How would we take the next steps to deal with parking in areas if it, if it becomes a nuisance, or when it becomes a nuisance, you know, due to certain developments? And again, that, I think that's going to be vital as well to the, to any redevelopment that we want to attract to the Littleton Boulevard subarea plan, is to understand what we've got, you know, in terms of parking, and what we would need to do going forward, to make that a really vital spot, and a really, a really lively area, and accessible area, both for, you know, to benefit both merchants and, you know, residents and visitors.
Great, thank you. And no updates from the chair, so I will adjourn this meeting at 7:42 PM.